Trustee Benucci is requested to attend this meeting electronically. If there are no objections, we'll go ahead and give her a call. Hi, Trustee Benucci, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. And Trustee Benucci is attending. Presidential comments?
I just have one, it's a proclamation declaring November thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the village of Plainfield. Whereas in two thousand fifteen, an estimated forty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and forty thousand five sixty will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become second by two thousand twenty. And whereas pancreatic cancer is that only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just seven percent. And whereas the symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves as generally late-stage, and seventy-three percent of the pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while ninety-three percent of the pancreatic cancer die within the first five years. And whereas approximately sixteen hundred and forty deaths will occur in Illinois in two thousand and fifteen, and whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world, and whereas there will be an estimated three hundred and sixty-seven thousand new pancreatic cancer diagnoses globally in two thousand fifteen. And whereas the good health and well-being of the residents in Plainfield enhances a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and the research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Now therefore be it resolved that the major -- excuse me, Mayor Collins and the Board of Trustees designate November thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day, and the village of Plainfield adopt it this day nineteen October. And I believe we have some representatives here.
November thirteenth as World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day.
Mayor Collins, may I like to make a comment in regard to this particular proclamation?
Pancreatic cancer came into my life six years ago.
I can go back quite a few years.
My husband was forty-four, he was an athlete, and he was a Marine, and he loved this town,
I remember when I got married, like about fifty-plus years ago, in the early sixties.
and he didn't stand a chance. Today I'm an advocate.
I can remember if you brought up the word "cancer," and this is only fifty years ago.
And we are not in the world we were in six years ago.
If you mentioned the word "cancer," you were socially inept.
We have some clinical trials, we have some survivors, but we have a long way to go.
It was almost like a disease that had to be hidden. The emperor of all diseases, you never could talk about it in public, and you think about
And it is with your help and the help of this town, as we push forward with awareness
what has occurred over the last fifty years. Though what is really poignant with this particular proclamation today, I'm the last
and we advocate for funding, that we are going to see hope in this disease.
of a very large family, there were ten boys in my family. My brother John was struck in the year two thousand with pancreatic cancer.
I thank you all again. Some ribbons for everybody.
Sixty-two years old, it was at that particular time because of the treatment, it was almost a hopeless situation. We have -- and he did succumb to the particular disease in the period of time that Mayor Collins spoke of. But what I'd like to say is right now, the word that was used by a representative from the Pancreatic Cancer Society was "hope." The word, it used to be "hopeless," now the word "hope" has replaced "hopeless." People are surviving pancreatic cancer. I know two individuals, because it's such a situation that I'm dear to my heart, I know two individuals that have had a very special surgery, they're in their fifth year of survival. And the one marvelous thing is that people support them, instead of being abandoned, as it was in the olden days, and I know there are individuals in this room who know what I'm talking about, the abandonment of cancer. There is hope, and it's out in the open, and that's the way people survive longer, are healthier, are happier, when other people support them. And thank you for coming here tonight and bringing this particular situation to the forefront in the village of Plainfield. There are a tremendous number of people here who will spread the word, and we have spread the word, and again, thank you for being here. It was encouragement.
Trustees' comments?
I'd just like to follow Trustee Rasic's comment. My father passed away almost forty years ago from pancreatic cancer. At that time, there's about a five percent survival rate. It's nice to see it going up a little bit, seven percent's still pretty bad, though. I'm glad there's hope, and I agree with Trustee Rasic, the kind of, the right kind of things are happening, is getting attention, and hopefully we get more funding and actually get some real progress going. So, thank you for the effort, and I hope it starts to pay off for all of us.
Are there any other trustee comments?
I'd like to make a comment. I don't know if Nora is still in the room there, but I know her personally, and I want to say that if you knew with this woman how hard she's working on this, she has not left her journey with losing her husband. If anything has spurred her on, she is lobbying for funds in Washington, she's lobbying local officials, and she's working very hard to get more funding put towards the cause of cancer research in the area of pancreatic cancer. So, you know, she is to be commended also for her work on that.
Thank you.
And she's still here, by the way. She heard you.
Well, she's definitely, she's having a good moment when it comes to this. I have another comment on a different note. The other thing I wanted to talk about was Electric Park and the riverfront in general. We are just moving ahead there, the farm landscaping is done and beautified out there, and if you haven't had a chance to look, check it out, you should. There's our building out there, is the educational center, and there's a whole display put together, particularly through Nikki Allender and other people that have helped her, but she led the way on this with artifacts and pictures and information on the whole history of Electric Park, and just the rich history of Plainfield from then and now, so it's really something to see. But if you haven't made a trip to the riverfront lately, you should go and check it out. And the executive director, Rob Epley, asked me to particularly thank Trustee O'Rourke and Trustee Lamb for coming out to their donor reception the other evening, so on behalf of the Riverfront Day, thank you very much. That's all.
Are there any other trustee comments?
To build on other trustee comments, but yeah, Trustee Benucci's right, we were at the presentation, the pictures are phenomenal for the history of Plainfield, covers from the Indian days all the way to current days, and Nikki's done a great job of putting it all together, and it's well worth seeing. It's not open all the time, but they're going to try to find ways of getting school kids there to go through it, and I highly recommend you get to see it too, if you had a sit in the history of Plainfield, because it's fascinating. One of the things they like to point out were the, you know, they used to cut ice on the DuPage River. In the wintertime these days, it doesn't usually freeze over, but they used to do it on Lake Renwick, but then they had a dam and it backed up, and they had, you know, horses that, you know, cut through or tracked the ice that marked it, and then they had people that sawed it, and so on, and the horses had little cleats on, which I've never seen before, and it's posted up on the wall. So, anyway, some real interesting things there, that's worth taking a peek at, plus great photographs, some gangsters and some famous entertainers and a few other things, so.
Are there any other trustee comments? Not, this would be the time for public comments. If there are any public comments, come to the podium. If there are no public comments, then we will proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Rasic?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-two thirty-seven, authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement for the property located at two twenty-five forty-four West one hundred and forty-third Street.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
Just have one, for the village administrator, we've received no complaints since the last meeting about this annexation, have we?
That's correct.
Okay.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not, the motion was made and seconded to adopt ordinance number thirty-two thirty-seven, authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement for the property located at two twenty-five forty-four West one hundred and forty-third Street. Trustee Rasic?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-two thirty-nine, rezoning the property located at two twenty-five forty-four West one hundred and forty-third Street to I-2.
I make a motion to it.
Resoning the property?
You can second if you want.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Rasic?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is community Christian church. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance for a special use for religious assembly, religious institution, and allowing an indoor recreation for the property commonly known as two forty thirty-five West Riverwalk Court, subject to the stipulations noted in the staff report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
I have a question, I'm sorry. So, there's a couple of conditions as part of this, I believe, and one of them was the formal control policy, which would include required hours of staff traffic control officers and the assignment of cost, and I'm assuming that the petitioners agreed to this?
Yes, the applicant has basically agreed to this. They understand that they'll be responsible for hiring any officers as relates to that control of that intersection. They'll have to obviously proceed with formal discussions with the Plainfield Police Department, and they'll be fully responsible for all costs related to that manual traffic control. As the staff report basically identified, the probability in the near future of getting a signal here is quite small, based on the IDOT's approval plan, therefore, there will have to be a manned police officer to control traffic on Route fifty-nine in that intersection at Riverwalk. And they'll be fully responsible for the cost.
The only, I'm sorry, the other question I had out there, and I know, I don't believe it came up during the planning commission meeting, that was the presence of another church that has assembly in that same area. So, is that going to have any potential impact as far as, I know there was a lot of discussion regarding the traffic and the parking in that facility, in that area?
Correct. There, as you know, there is another church, an existing adjacent industrial building, but that church is a relatively small space. As we recall, when that special use was approved several years ago, I believe that that congregation is smaller than, I think, twenty-five or thirty people. It's a very, very small, limited space, and therefore, there's really no potential for that congregation to expand, should really have, should have really no significant impact on the traffic on Riverwalk in the intersection of Route fifty-nine.
Thank you.
Just one clarification, the stipulations that Trustee O'Rourke touched on, I want to make sure the petitioner was aware of. I just want to clarify, that's consistent with what we've done with other organizations in similar situations?
Yes, it is.
Sounds great, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Just one comment, tremendous number of people representing the church here tonight, we've never seen a crowd this big, so. They can see you like rock stars, but we're not really.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not, the motion was made and seconded to direct the village attorney to prepare the necessary ordinances for the community Christian church at the property commonly known as two forty thirty-five West Riverwalk Court, subject to the stipulations in the staff report. Trustee Rasic?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-two thirty-nine, rezoning the property located at two twenty-five forty-four West one hundred and forty-third Street to I-2.
I make a motion to it.
Rezoning the property?
You can second if you want.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
No.
Hearing none, we'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Rasic?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is community Christian church. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance for a special use for religious assembly, religious institution, and allowing an indoor recreation for the property commonly known as two forty thirty-five West Riverwalk Court, subject to the stipulations noted in the staff report. Trustee Rasic?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is community Christian church. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance for a special use for religious assembly, religious institution, and allowing an indoor recreation for the property commonly known as two forty thirty-five West Riverwalk Court, subject to the stipulations noted in the staff report. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
I have a question, I'm sorry. So, there's a couple of conditions as part of this, I believe, and one of them was the formal control policy, which would include required hours of staff traffic control officers and the assignment of cost, and I'm assuming that the petitioners agreed to this?
Yes, the applicant has basically agreed to this. They understand that they'll be responsible for hiring any officers as relates to that control of that intersection. They'll have to obviously proceed with formal discussions with the Plainfield Police Department, and they'll be fully responsible for all costs related to that manual traffic control. As the staff report basically identified, the probability in the near future of getting a signal here is quite small, based on the IDOT's approval plan, therefore, there will have to be a manned police officer to control traffic on Route fifty-nine in that intersection at Riverwalk. And they'll be fully responsible for the cost.
The only, I'm sorry, the other question I had out there, and I know, I don't believe it came up during the planning commission meeting, that was the presence of another church that has assembly in that same area. So, is that going to have any potential impact as far as, I know there was a lot of discussion regarding the traffic and the parking in that facility, in that area?
Correct. There, as you know, there is another church, an existing adjacent industrial building, but that church is a relatively small space. As we recall, when that special use was approved several years ago, I believe that that congregation is smaller than, I think, twenty-five or thirty people. It's a very, very small, limited space, and therefore, there's really no potential for that congregation to expand, should really have, should have really no significant impact on the traffic on Riverwalk in the intersection of Route fifty-nine.
Thank you.
Just one clarification, the stipulations that Trustee O'Rourke touched on, I want to make sure the petitioner was aware of. I just want to clarify, that's consistent with what we've done with other organizations in similar situations?
Yes, it is.
Sounds great, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Just one comment, tremendous number of people representing the church here tonight, we've never seen a crowd this big, so. They can see you like rock stars, but we're not really.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not, the motion was made and seconded to direct the village attorney to prepare the necessary ordinances for the community Christian church at the property commonly known as two forty thirty-five West Riverwalk Court, subject to the stipulations in the staff report. Trustee Rasic?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Look forward to seeing that converted to an active church, you've got some great plans, so it's going to be a really nice addition to the Plainfield, and you all do a great deal of work for Plainfield, anyway. So, welcome.
I also do want to say, this is how you get things done, to everybody out there, you have a group of people lobby your government, and you've all achieved the results you've desired. Thank you.
Thank you.
They never applaud like that for our budget reports, Tracy.
I think we'll take a minute.
I might as well. I've never seen you applaud. I've never seen a mayor like that. You?
You know, I gotta tell you, I've never been applauding like that before. I've never been in a room where they applaud. No, they probably, we've got to walk back. Yeah.
Stick into it. Go ahead, Michelle.
Lockport Street. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the village president to execute a real estate contract for the property commonly known as two forty eighteen West Lockport Street.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
I have a quick comment. We've had this building for quite some time, we've taken a lot of comments in regards to us acquiring this building, and this was the best offer that we received on the building, and I do think that does put us in a better position moving forward. Thank you.
I do have a comment, I guess it's related to, I guess there's a paragraph number seven, it talks about seller and purchaser represent, neither is dealt with any broker in connection with the negotiation, execution of this contract that would result in any broker commission. And I guess that's part of my concern with this deal, is that there was no real estate commission due to the fact that we didn't have the property listed for sale with a broker. We did not even, I don't believe, even put a for-sale sign on the property indicating that it was for sale. And my concern is that I'm not sure how we get the best selling price with this limited market.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I have a particular comment in regard to what Trustee O'Rourke specifically stated about getting the best price. That thing, that, I shouldn't say that thing, that church has been on the open market for five years. People have not been lining up in order to buy it. It has been alluded to that we should perhaps have placed it up for auction, or it had been listed a number of times with realtors, and nothing ever, there was no fruition of all of that effort. It had been on the market for a good long time. In order for that building to survive, the village of Plainfield had to take on a giant burden. It was not only a financial burden, but it was also an emotional burden. If we had said, let it be destroyed, let it be taken down, the community would have been outraged. And if we don't get the best dollar, the community possibly could be outraged. The whole issue is, Mr. Murphy has been working on this for, I suspect, you're in three years, I was going to say your entire tenure here, but I would suspect you feel as though it was your entire tenure here, just trying to do something with that, maintaining that building, hoping it would still stand. Well, we did it, and it is in good hands, in my estimation, if this particular sale goes through, because the community will still have the old St. Mary's Church building in our community, instead of a vacant lot, that someone could possibly put something on that we don't want. That is part of Plainfield, there's a good number of the individuals in the village of Plainfield who went to that church. I used to go to that church before we built St. Mary's on Route fifty-nine, so it does have an awful lot of meaning for me, and I know it has an awful lot of meaning for others in this community. And I think we're doing the best thing we possibly can, and I totally support this motion. Thank you.
I'm in agreement with Trustee Peck and Trustee Rasic as well. The building, if the village were to keep it moving forward, would become a huge liability, would be responsible for any workman's comp claims if we were to remodel it ourselves, any injuries that may have been caused on the property site. I believe the village is getting a good deal for the property, and I'm glad to see that it's going to be put to good use.
From my point of view, I think the most important part of the deal is that it's being preserved as-is, as a church, as an institution that fits in with the rest of downtown Plainfield. Historically, it's very important, and to put something else there, even if we got another $10,000 or $20,000, I think it'd be a serious error on the part of the village. I think we did the right thing for preserving something which means a lot to the downtown image, and I'm very happy that we finally have somebody who will take it and do something with it again, so that should be very nice. They're going to refurbish it, originally keeping the stained glass windows, things like that, are a very, very important part of historical image that is projected in town, so.
Michelle?
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment. One of the benefits of this whole deal is that, as everyone has mentioned, the building will more than likely still stand. We're getting our money out of it. We need to get out of the real estate business of the village, and that's not our, that's not our business to do that. I think we're getting a good deal on this because we're pulling back in the money that we spent on this building. And I think the fact that, the added effect is that it's going to be people that are in the community are ready, that see the value of it, it's a great option. I do understand what Trustee O'Rourke is saying, and from a business perspective, so, you know, this isn't a, you know, jump ahead session, but truly, it's, this is just a unique situation, and frankly, I'm surprised that we've had as many people look at it as we did, and we are very successful now with this deal, and it's time to move on.
Clarification, I guess I just wanted to make the comment that I'm not against selling it, I'm certainly for the preservation of a historic part of a building in downtown. My concern with was the process in which we went about trying to get the highest and best price, that's all. I think we have, Mr. Committe, or Trustee Radich indicated that we had listed the property, I don't think during my tenure that we have. We even have a webpage that talks about government transparency, and I don't even think it was listed on our webpage. So, that's my concern, it's not that I'm against selling the property, it's not that I'm against preserving part of the history of downtown Plainfield, I'm certainly for that.
I have to back up Trustee Rasic's comment, I've been on the board for ten years, and we've had many, many discussions about this property, a lot of people have looked at it, I don't think we've hidden it from anybody. It's just not something you list on the market because you're trying to preserve it as-is, where it is. We don't want to move it, it's unmovable. If somebody bought it and they wanted to tear it down, the village loses a lot in that case, so.
But you could still preserve it and still have a different way of marketing it, that's all.
I understand your point, and most things would be listed, this was known, though, it's not multiple listed, I don't know that many people want to buy a historical building, historical church, I don't know, there's a whole big demand out there for that. I think we did well, I think we got what we wanted, we accomplished our objectives, and I'm pleased with the process, even though it took quite a while.
You know, before we move on, I have to make a particular comment in regard to a trustee comment. You can never criticize an individual, but you can criticize a particular action or a discussion point. When Trustee O'Rourke said transparency is important, I find that almost to be an insult to think that this board is not currently transparent on that particular issue. I felt very transparent, I felt that there was never a deceit, I never felt that there was any lack of transparency. Our administration, all the way from our, from Mr. Murphy, all the way to Mr. Garrigan, to Mr. Person, all the way down this board, everyone here felt very transparent. You know, you look for, oftentimes, it's mentioned that someone, we need a better price. You know, people in hell are looking for ice water, and they're not getting it. We waited for over five-plus years to get a good price, and we finally got
That was the comment I made.
Any other comments or questions? Not, the motion was made and seconded. To authorize the village president to execute a real estate contract for the property commonly known as 24018 West Lockport Street. Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
No.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
Before we go any further, I'd just like to make a comment, too. I've been on this board for a number of years, and I was on the board when we created the historical district. And it took almost two years to get that document passed by this board, because we want to make sure that everybody had a fair shake, everybody had an opinion, every, all the questions were answered, and everything else. Since then, we've gone ahead and declared rural and urban districts, and just recently, we declared a downtown district, historical district. We have numerous buildings throughout the village that have been declared historical around the national register. The Catholic Church has been around since the 1800s, and I truly believe that the village took the proper steps in purchasing it before it just fell apart. We saved it, and much to the credit of a historical district downtown, and I think that selling the building and having it possibly restored to its original state, or close to it, I think is admirable for this board and the village of Plainfield. So, I want to thank the board for their vote, and that's all.
Administrator's report?
I said my six words for the night.
Management Services report?
No report tonight.
Engineers report?
No report.
Planning Department report?
Yes, very briefly. You have in your packet a request from the president's heating arts pavilion. A current, a letter of credit or charity bond was posted for approximately $208,000. As you know, that project was recently completed. There is a certificate of occupancy for that building. Pursuant to that fact, the applicant is requesting a release of the charity bond in approximately $208,000, $425. There is an escrow, as you know, the only really loose end is there's a sidewalk that still has to be constructed. The applicant has submitted an escrow for approximately $20,000 for the construction of that sidewalk, but they are requesting a release of the charity bond as outlined in the staff's report.
I move that we approve the release of the charity bond in the amount of $208,425.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Billing Department report?
Just the operations report. Nothing else.
Public Works report?
No report.
What?[1461.66][1461.66](LAUGHTER). Come on, say something. Hello.
But as a preview, next week.[1465.66][1465.66](LAUGHTER). I hope we get the same crowd we had tonight. I'm sure we will. We will be talking about the street department budget and some other things, too, as well. So, it's going to be an exciting presentation a week from tonight.
As always, we don't have slides from Derek Wal. Remember, oh, that, I'll never forget that. We'll circle later on.
Police Chief's report?
The only item I have tonight is the operations report for September. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And I actually do have one other reminder. Our next chat with the chiefs, with the police, fire department, and EMA will be on Wednesday, October 28th, at 7:00 PM at the Plainfield Fire District Headquarters. Thank you.
Attorney's report?
And no report this evening. Thank you.
Reminders?
October 20th is our next planning commission meeting. The 26th will be our next committee to hold, and our next village board meeting will be November 2nd.
Seeking a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Thank you. Have a nice night. Thank you very much. Bye.